Medicine, just you can turn up and down. I think same to do, would you share it? Yes.
Go ahead, Mark.
Here was. Uh, go ahead and turn your, uh, speakers on if you dare. If you dare.
Okay, well, thank you for the opportunity to share, uh, share my agendas with you. I say agendas because I've now been tasked with also the, uh, fair and rodeo budgets as well. So, um, we'll, we'll start with the fairgrounds. You know, really, um, there's, we have, we're, we're projecting a slight decrease in our professional service budget. Particularly over the last few years, there was some stuff that we had previously put in six twenty that we're now reclassifying in other places. Living services and, you know, pest control and things like that. So, um, we'll see a slight, excuse me, decrease there. We are looking at a little bit of.
Can you hold on a minute when you say C, where are we at on this? In our agenda, though, I'd see that too.
Five C, like what page of the budget is the?
I see building inspection.
I don't know where did you get yours was, were these workshop things sent to us?
I, I don't have any documents related.
Yeah, but could we tie into what's gonna be in the budget opening?
Yeah.
So I, I just pulled this off of cell, or actually I pulled it out of this.
Cause I'm at fairgrounds and I see some, but.
Fairgrounds where, in Cassell?
Budget that was presented to us?
Yeah.
They're looking at full tentative budget.
But where is the fairgrounds in the tentative budget?
Forty-five eleven.
What page? I've got, I've got twenty-seven pages.
Let's see, health, fairground, aging.
Administration, I don't see anything.
I see fairgrounds and then.
Yeah, you guys won't see the detail.
What page you on?
I don't even see, I don't even see a big picture.
Is that what you're on?
Do you have any thing that says fairgrounds even with a total?
And.
On the tentative budget?
Well, and this is the problem.
That's why I was just hoping to see what he was doing.
We never see the detail. Uh, this is exactly how we've gotten it in the past. It's just like this, these big broad aspects of theme. We don't see the line items and, uh, and that's, and that's what we have actually been concerned about in the past. But not, not to your dismay, but I'm just saying.
Oh, I found it on page eight. It says culture and recreation. It says fairgrounds. It gives their twenty twenty-two actual, twenty twenty-three estimate and a twenty twenty-four budget. Okay, is that the numbers you're looking at? It says twenty twenty-three, you spent two point six million and you're asking for two point one million in twenty twenty-four?
On page what?
Page nine.
Page eight of the tentative budget, on the very bottom.
Page eight.
I see, I see on page.
Yeah, two point, two point six in the twenty.
Eight of twenty-seven, you see that?
There. Nine, twenty-seven, tentative budget.
That's what we got, okay. We don't have any detail, but those, at least our totals, at least we're talking about the same amount of money.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, so we, we're actually down a little bit from what we have been in the past. Some of that's, you know, just projects or wrap it up or we're getting completed, so, um.
We like it when you need less money.
Yeah, yeah, well, I do too. But I, but I like more too because it means we're getting stuff done.
Yeah.
So.
But a lot of, a lot of our capital projects, we try and fund as much as we can out of the RAPS funding and two. And, and this year we received a pretty good chunk of RAPS funding and we're working through those projects now, so. Just a couple highlights maybe. Utility costs are projected. I'm looking at probably a twenty to thirty percent increase over what they've been in the past. You know, as I'm paying bills this year and, and extrapolating those out, there, there are some increases in our, uh, both, uh, light and power and water and also, um, sanitation.
Garbage collection.
Yeah, garbage collection, so.
You think that'll go up? I'm laughing.
I don't know about the city, but I'm afraid it will in the county. I haven't seen what that's gonna look like yet, but, um, there are a few capital projects I'm looking at. On the event center itself, there's an awning on the east side on the, um, off of the lobby that is built a little bit too low and that pathway gets used quite a bit for vehicles to pass through and it's been hit a couple times. So we're gonna raise that up. That's gonna be, you know, a little, a little bit of money, but in the end it'll be a, be a better product and better to, for, for our customers. We're looking at projecting a sixteen, roughly sixteen percent increase on our, on our revenues this year. You know, we've just gotten, yes.
What's that number since we?
The revenues?
Yeah.
Uh, so twenty twenty-three budget is two sixteen and we're projecting two fifty-ish. So, we've, it, we've been incredibly busy down there this year and, um.
And that's just event rentals that coming through?
Event rental, horse stall rental, yep, all that stuff that's coming through. That doesn't take into account any of the, uh, RAPS funding at all, so. But that's really it in, for the fairgrounds budget. Like I say, we're, overall, we're, we're actually down a little bit and our revenues are up, so that's, that's a good thing, right?
Yeah, we like that.
I like that.
Certainly a crazy busy place.
Well, you, you saw what it was like on, on Friday, I think, when you come through there. It was, it was insane. We had the vintage market days down there and it was thousands and thousands of people. And, you know, y'all know what the weather was like on Thursday and Friday with, there was people in the pouring rain in line at six o'clock to get in so they could get their swag bag with ten dollars worth of trinkets and stuff. It's, it's crazy.
In line?
Pardon me?
Did you see him in line?
I didn't see him in line. He could have been there.
If you stand in line longer than what the function is, it's not worth it, so.
Yeah, that's kinda what it is.
Game tickets to BYU and the Aggies.
I stood in line for nine hours one time to get into a Def Leppard concert, so I'll just.
Now, that might be worth it.
That was worth it.
That would be worth it.
It was.
Yes, I told my wife she has to play that at my funeral.
It's not the clothes it's on.
Rodeo, um, I'll just, and, and this kind of budget was kinda put together before me and like I, well, I'm, I'm just kinda getting into this and we're just getting our numbers in now for the twenty twenty-three, what, what our actual expenses have been this year. But, uh, we're projecting a budget of three seventy-six, eight hundred last year. We was three seventy-five, uh, twenty-three actual to date. What I'm showing is close to three hundred and we're still paying bills, so. And then on the revenue side, twenty-three revenue, two ninety, basically two ninety-eight, uh, budget of three seventy-five. I think that might be a little bit optimistic. I need to look into that one a little bit.
On the summary, it says three seventy-six, eight, twenty-four budget.
On the, yeah, oh, yeah, yep, sorry, I was looking at the wrong line.
There's no revenue on ours, which is.
And what's the revenue on that one?
The re, the, the revenue for twenty-four is three seventy-six, eight, but I think that's a little op, a little too optimistic.
That's why you're budgeting that.
Revenue, they say the revenue will be in that one.
Yeah, and I, I don't believe that. We haven't been anywhere close to that in the past.
What is it now?
It's gone out, so.
Year to date, right now, we're at two ninety-seven, two ninety-eight.
Okay.
But we're still, we're still getting in, uh, sponsor checks.
So what we should see is a difference between the revenue and, like, what actually is coming out of the county fund and budget?
Why can't we see what?
And Lamont, Lamont will give you a more in-depth report than what I'm giving you now.
Okay.
I don't wanna steal his thunder because that's something he does every year. Him and Lane both will provide reports to the council on both the fair and the rodeo.
All right. When do they do that, do you know?
Um, seems like it's usually December.
Okay.
November, December.
This is my first budget process, so I'm.
So I, I actually do have statements of revenue and expense that were submitted by each department. I can share those with for rodeo, fairgrounds for you right now. I'll just email it to you right now.
The breakdown.
A revenue and expense?
Revenue, I have, it's twenty, twenty-two actual, uh, September twenty-third actual, twenty twenty-three budget, twenty twenty-four request. But this is the request submitted by the departments.
Okay.
So it could be different from the.
From what the executive does in, in the budget, okay.
And but, when it says rodeo, it says rodeo, that means that's a cumulative, uh, uh, ex, for all the expenses they, of all the different categories that they have. Okay, I wanna see those. I wanna see all those categories.
And this actually does have that.
Okay, I wanna see all the categories of revenue. You know, I wanna see what, I wanna see what makes up that, uh, you know, see, see where, where are the big expenses? What are we, what are we dumping all the money into and, and then so we can ask the good questions, the right questions, you know?
So are, um, from some of the livestock families that go now, they have whole, like, families parking the whole week there and, and camping. They, I had multiple come, families come and talk to me and say there weren't enough outlets where the campers were, that they were sharing like four outlets. Is that something that's, that we could expand that? Cause I don't think the families camping there is gonna go away.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a hard thing to deal with because we have so many people that want to use those and it's a balancing act of parking for the people that are attending versus camping for people for a convenience.
Yeah.
So, I don't know. I mean, we cer, we certainly could, you know.
Is it true there were only four outlets for them?
Along that fence line where there is, yeah, yeah, it is true. Along the fence line where the rodeo stock contractor parks, we can get up to ten or a few more with power. There's another area slightly to the east under the trees and there's four, four of those spots that we sell with power.
That spot doesn't give them power. It just gives them a spot.
Some, some of them, some of those, four of those, as she said, have power.
Pay more for that?
They pay more for the ones with power.
Park their trailers there?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
How much they pay off top of your head?
I'm thinking it was seventy-five for the week without power and a hundred and a quarter with power.
A couple hundred with power?
Yeah, yeah, and, and we've been, we've been increasing those gradually over the years.
Yeah, okay.
The demand has just started to.
Yeah, I mean, I think from the families with livestock that I know, it's a family event, like they go and spend
Yeah.
multiple days there as a family and are, you know, with their four H groups and they're, it's a, it's a thing that they do. So if we could look into putting some more electricity and charge them for it.
Yeah, yeah, we, um, typically it's either the last Monday in June or the first Monday in July. I, we have a reservation system for those and they're gone within, yeah, a minute or two.
Yeah.
So there is a high demand for them.
Well, I would imagine that's cheap for a place to stay for a week.
It is, it is.
You could probably charge double that and people would be happy.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I'm, I'm sure they would, so. But that, that's a good point and that's certainly something that we can look at. But like I said, it's, you know, parking versus
Right.
patron parking, so, um, that, that's a hard.
Balance.
Hard balance, it really is.
Okay.
Those, those traders occupy, you know, we, we'll have forty, forty of those trailers camp there and we could put a hundred plus cars or more in that same space.
They cycle through to get more and more people there instead of taking, parking the spot.
Right, so. So the last one I'll just briefly mention is the fair budget, yep. So we're looking at, um, total expenditures, uh, nine twenty-three year to date, one sixty-seven, five twelve. Twenty-two was one seventy, one seventy-six roughly. Twenty-three budget of two sixty-seven and a twenty-four request of two thirty. As, as I look through some of these specific lines or some of those that I'm questioning myself, so I'm gonna go back and reevaluate some of those. I think they might be a little bit low, but.
Yeah, cause didn't you start with nine something you said?
That was for the fairgrounds. This is the actual fair.
This is the fair.
This is the fair. Like if you look on the next page.
Yep. And then revenues, year to date, fifty-seven, two twenty-three. The twenty-three budgeted amount of one twenty and a twenty-four, uh, projected amount of one twenty also, so.
Does that seem high then?
No, I don't think our revenues seem high. I think my expenses, actually, there's some of these that concern me that maybe they're a little bit low. Matter of fact, I know some of them are low. Prize money and trophies due to the number of people that are participating in the fair now, our premiums, we're paying more out in premiums. You know, for these blue ribbons and red ribbons and, and whatnot, so, um, I know so far this year, we paid out thirty-two thousand, roughly thirty-two thousand. So we're, we're over the twenty-eight already and that's gonna continue to grow, so.
How does, how does boosting animals work when, uh, an organization goes in and will boost the animals? Do they pay that to the county and then the county pays it to them?
I'm not familiar with that. Chairman Erickson would be more familiar with that.
That all goes through the General Livestock Cell Committee. They have the organization, they have the ca, the account, every, all that money goes to that five oh one three C that's set up for there. It does not go through the county at all.
County is not affiliated, okay, that's good.
Right, same with, with all the.
If they would like to take it over. And col, and collect a million dollars and disperse it with a smile.
Yeah.
So the revenue that you're talking about that we had is a hundred and twenty thousand is projected, right?
Yeah, vendor booths and, and money that we get from the carnival and, um, you know, things like that, so.
Is there a way that we can see, like you said, revenue so far was fifty-seven thousand? Like the detail on that, where that revenue is, and you're still collecting revenue, is that from the fair?
I suspect that that probably does not have on there the carnival, what we get from the carnival, which is a pretty decent chunk as well, so.
Yeah, it'd just be nice to see that detail.
Yep, yep. But that's really all I have unless you guys have any questions. No, that's all right. It's, I know it's, it's your first time here, so.
Well, it's hard, I can't see any of this, so.
I just uploaded the rodeo fairgrounds.
Okay, so close out and then pull it back up?
But there's still not that much detail in there.
In your packet.
Yeah.
So it's, it's the bottom three items in your packet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So those are the, the budget requests from the departments.
Thanks, that's helpful.
More itemized than what I'm seeing?
Yeah, then I don't have to just ask you to read it off your page.
So, the event center with the alcohol improvement and everything else, what's, is it just increasing in revenue?
It, it is.
About what's going on there?
Yeah, so i- it is, but not necessarily because of the alcohol, uh, policy that we recently implemented. I mean, that does play a part in, in a few of the events. What I'm typically seeing is, um, most events still aren't, aren't going with, you know, with the alcohol stuff. Certainly some of the Kinsaneras and.
What is the alcohol policy?
They can now have alcohol at the event center?
They have to, do they have to get a permit?
Yeah, so there's, there's two, two types of ways that they can get there. One of them is a, a single event permit issued by the state of Utah. The other, other is a private event, which doesn't have anything to do with the state of Utah, but we are regulating it internally. And, and that's allowed by, um, by the state, so.
So do you think the event center's being used enough or too much or where are we at? Were you at a?
We, we are booked out almost, almost every weekend.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, almost every week. It's Saturdays, we're booked out almost every Saturday. There's, there's been a few that, that we aren't, but we could book them out. We've, we've had to balance private parties versus what's best for the public and, and public events. And one way we've done that is by not allowing private events to book out any more than ninety days out. The Kinsaneras and some of those want to book out years and they wanna have that planned well in advance. So some of them, we, you know, we're not capturing. When we get within that ninety days, we'll call up some of them because we'll put them on a waiting list and some of them take us up on the waiting list, some of them say we have other plans, so. Uh, we're trying, trying to capture those where we don't have something on those weekends, but we don't always succeed in that. But we wanna leave those available for those events like November Fest and some of those that are, have more public involvement and, you know, people can attend, so. But typically those are booked out more than ninety days ahead too, sometimes years in advance. But it, it is busy. We're, we're busy down there quite often.
One more question?
Yes.
The fairgrounds advisory board. Does it meet on a regular schedule? Is it just like, oh, when we decide we wanna have a meeting? I'm, I feel like I don't have those on my calendar and I missed one and.
You haven't missed one. That, and that's a great question. I, I'm not one that likes to have meetings just to have meetings.
Thank you.
If, if we have something that, that we need to go over, then we'll look at those. We could look at quarterly perhaps. I don't think that's too, that, that's probably a good balance to maybe look.
Talk to Micah and put something specific on a calendar that we, cause things book out, seems like I have so many different meetings and stuff and sometimes I, I think, am I missing fairground meeting?
No, no.
I don't know.
We do need to have one coming up though, as we, we're gonna be looking at, and I, I come back and talk to you guys, I think, in November to give a fairgrounds report, um, at that point. We're gonna look at adjusting some of the fees and things as well, so. I'll be back then and we, but we will need to have a meeting between now and then.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Taking care of a big, big asset of the county.
Yep.
You bet. You guys have a great evening.
See you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark. You bet.
Think I'm next, right, okay. How's everybody doing this afternoon?
Good.
All right, so first off, I just wanted to maybe go over the grants, new grants we got this year. Two major ones, one kinda minor. The first is that we, the, the biggest one I'm excited for is we got a social worker grant. That is shared with Box Elder. It's an eighty thousand dollar grant that we, it's gonna be running through Cache County though, the funding. And we've hired somebody for that. There was actually somebody that worked for Bear River Mental Health. Jessie Vickers been doing it a long time. She's great, she just started. And the social worker is mainly for child welfare at this point, but it's gonna be, uh, helping people, you know, in, getting their kids back, getting jobs, um, clothes for work, help them to get their driver's license. All those types of things what, what the social worker's gonna be used for, which are, which we're in need of. The next grant that we received was we got a, a grant for a serious felony defender, which I posted and filled. One of the current public defenders, um, is going to fill that position. That'd be Cameron Cox. He's been do, an attorney for eighteen years. We need somebody with a lot of experience to do this. And then, so now I have his op, his, uh, position open, trying to fill that position. I have not been able to fill that though, which has been, uh, I don't know. The attorney market for the last couple of years has been difficult, so we'll have to see. I went to lunch with a potential candidate today. We'll see if we can fill that, hopefully we can. And then the next grant we received, we received, uh, some funding for reimbursement for parental defense costs. So I cover, one of, one of the things I manage is on the juvenile court side is there's the parental defense when people lose their kids or, or having those type of things. So any, any type of funding we pay for that, the IDC reimburses us fifteen percent of that funding. So if they, if we spend X amount of money, they reimburse that. Uh, the next thing I wanted to kinda make over, make sure we understand the budget is last year we combined with Box Elder for managing defender costs. So this last year I've been helping Box Elder get their, uh, situation organized and set up and then they, they pay us ninety-eight thousand and some change, I think it's ninety-eight seven. That money originally was put back in the general fund, but the IDC informed us that we needed to use that money within the public defender system. And so some of the costs we've, we spread out that money through there from, from giving the serious felony some additional money and helping out with, uh, things like, uh, legal research costs, uh, bar dues, CLE, which is, uh, every year as attorneys we're required to do so many hours of continued legal education. We have to take, keep our licenses and things such as that. So kinda, those are kinda the major things that have happened that I see that's happened in the budget this year. I also wanna thank the council for the support with the ARPA funds. Most of that, I would like to put use with the social worker and so they can have funds to help. I mean, I think this, I mean, the ARPA funds are supposed to help the community. There's not a, more, uh, boots on the ground than the social worker giving directly money to the community. It's gonna help families, it's gonna go directly to them, so I really appreciate that and our office does as well. But that's kinda the major highlights of, of the budget this year. I think, I don't think there's too many increases because we used the funding we got from Box Elder to spread out through, through the, the budget, if that makes sense.
So I sit here and, and I'm glad we got ARPA, but I get concerned down the road, when ARPA's exhausted, what are we gonna do?
You're right.
And how, can we put any estimate to that so that there's a council and a budget, we're sitting here saying, hold, flip?
So we don't have any fun, like positions funded by ARPA. The, the ARPA funding that we're using at this point is just going to help the social worker do their job. We already had some funding set, I already had some funding set aside for that. It was like five thou, it wasn't as, near as much. But I, I'm gonna hopefully apply for grants and, and see what we can do as, as a county to have more. I mean, that, without having funding for the social worker to go do things, it's hard for the social worker to do their job, so. Having money to help them, you know, very, I mean, we, I've had requests to help them get their driver's license. We have one that, money helping them getting married. You know, things just, things you wouldn't think of, uh, in the criminal justice system that helps them. Anything we can do to help, in my opinion, social workers kinda help reduce the recidivism weight rate. If they're there helping them when they get out of jail, get a job, get housing, those types of things, they're less likely to be, have interactions with law enforcement again, less likely to go use drugs. So the social worker, I think, is a big key in ensuring that we don't have the continued crime rate increase.
Where, what's the source of your grant?
The Indian Defense Commission.
That's a federal?
It's a state, it's a state-run grant, yep. I think they get federal money. I think the money originally is federal money and then they disperse it, from my understanding.
Is there a public defender line anywhere on the tentative budget that we got or anywhere? Where's the attorney's office? I don't see anything that says. I don't, I just don't see anything that even, oh, wait, there's the attorney. I see it, wait a minute, I found it. On page nine of twenty-seven or page eight up at the top. There it is, okay. Sorry, I thought I'd looked at every page.
Attorney.
Yep, the total grants we have now, we've increased grants substantially the last couple of years. You know, first I usually try to get a grant for, for things if we can. If you request, if I request with the council first, I can't later on request a grant for that. So I usually try to go to get a grant funding in, in that area first. Um, if not, if it's an absolute need, then I usually will make that request from the council.
Okay, can I ask a basic question?
Sure.
Like the public defenders in the county, is it, I remember you guys talking about it last year when I was at a meeting. You work on a contract basis, you're not, you don't work for the county. You have your own, you have your own practice, but you take on cases for a certain amount of money from the county, is that correct?
So, yeah, so we, a couple of years ago, so I'm the only county employee and then my assistant is a county employee. All the other public defenders are contractors. And, uh, you know, we, the last couple of years, we've made a lot of changes, but yeah, they still are, they have their own practices. Some of them, this is all they do. Some of them have other things they do as well, but most of them just probably do the public defender thing.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to understand. And is that like in your, that's part of that budget?
Right, so that they're, they're. Right, so that they're contract cost. So, right now, we have a total of seven defenders. They get paid eighty-five hundred a month for their contract.
Okay.
And some of that's covered by grants.
And they have to supply their own office space and all that other stuff for themselves?
Right, they don't have benefits or anything such as that.
That's just a straight, like ten ninety-nine?
Yeah, they get, they send me, we send an invoice into the county once a month and then the county cuts them a check.
Okay.
That's it, so. But hopefully, we can change that in the future and we're, there's only one other county that has, that started a public defender office, that has official public defender office like we do, so. Most states have a public defender's office either run through the state or a county, so Utah's kind of strange in the fact that they do it all through contract work.
What's our backlog right now? Is it pretty heavy or what's it like?
It's getting, it's actually getting better. The last year, we've done more trials in the last ten years, so. And that's only the trials that have gone. A lot of times, I don't think a lot of people realize, you'll have a case that won't settle till a week before trial. So, you're already doing all the trial prep work and things such as that and then the case will finally settle, but yeah, we're getting through the backlog, it's getting cleared up.
Good.
Mike, thanks for all you do. One of the things that I think we've been trying to do as a county is to create some parity or equity between what we do on the prosecution side and what we do on the defense side. And thank you for all of the progress you've helped us to make toward that end. I know we're not there yet, I know funding-wise, we're not there yet, staffing-wise, we're not there yet. Will you just talk for a minute about some of the things that you think we still need to do and are still on our path toward that parity?
Sure.
And even what you think the next step would be?
Sure. So, when I, when we first started this, when we got hired on, I mean, just the kind of big changes that we've made since then, we have a full-time investigator like the prosecutor's office does now. We have legal, we pay for legal research, we pay for their bar dues. We've increased their, last year, the council increased their pay, then had a pay raise in like eight years. So, that's all really helped. Right now, we, now we have a conflict offender as well, so we have one person, that's all they do is conflicts from other attorneys. That's a big problem when doing public defender work.
Will you just explain really quickly what that is?
So, like, for example, there's two defendants that get picked up on a drug charge and that attorney can't represent both people. So, we have to have another person. Or, you know, you've represented, one public defender has represented this individual multiple times, they can't later again be on the opposite side or going against that person. So, that conflict offender has helped, we've got funding for that. So, we've created a lot more structure and organization as far as that. What I would like to see in the future, I think it's going that way with the state, is having a county employees, having a building, that's what I like to see the future. I don't know, as of right now, with the attorney market, if that's a possibility, because there's a huge attorney shortage. I know the prosecutor's office has had a hard time finding attorneys, we've had a hard time finding attorneys. Like I said, we've had an opening for two months, I've gotten three applicants. And, I mean, we have one of the best contract prices in the state, so I don't know what to do that with that. But, yeah, what going forward, Mike and I think David is right, is I'd like to see a social worker office, like the victim's advocates are there with the prosecutors, I'd like to see a social worker side of our office to help defendants. Right now, we only have one for the juvenile court, I'd like to see one we have for the district court, helping them get into drug treatment programs, helping them when they get out of jail to help them get a place to live, those types of things. And, you know, as a parity as funding goes, you know, we've made substantial progress and I really appreciate the council in doing that. And I think we do have some steps, I mean, we've been biting at that apple slowly as we go, but I think we'll get there in the next couple of years.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep, thank you again for your time, I appreciate it.
Okay, so can you guys explain to me then, we have this tentative budget, we'd all like to see more detail, obviously, what is the next step that we do in approving the budget? Like, I don't know what, what are we supposed to be doing?
That's when we start taking it and we start putting the questions and saying, hey, this is, we're going to put some here, take from here.
Yeah, but do we, like, you have a question and you talk to the fire department, say, hey, we can't do this, or I don't, what is the process? Like, what is my role? Do I just, do I talk to you guys when I see a problem? Do I talk to a department person? Do we talk together? I don't know, I don't know.
I'd say yes.
Yes, on all that.
I know, but how? Like, do we talk at the next council meeting? Do we have a workshop? Do we?
We'll have several workshops.
Several workshops.
Several workshops.
Thing that Dave's pointed out is we need to, we need to have a lot more detail in the budget so that we can look at the line items, we can question.
I have, these documents I just sent you with rodeo.
Although, I don't know what the numbers, but I think most of them.
I have them for every department.
I know, but there's still not enough in detail on that. Like, it just says revenue and it gives a total, it doesn't say what it's for.
He just sent us, he just emailed it or?
It's on your, it's in your packet, look at your packet.
I just loaded this, you'll need to refresh your packet.
I just looked at it though and it's not, it's still not what Dave was talking about.
You know, I went into Cassell and I couldn't pull it up in Cassell for some reason.
Couldn't pull up the tentative budget?
The tentative budget, yeah.
I don't, I don't know if there's a way you can find the tentative budget in Cassell. I think you can only see, Dave, do you know if there's a way to see the tentative budget in Cassell?
There's a report, but I don't feel like exactly like this.
Yeah, you really can only see the current year budget in Cassell, that's my understanding, at least as far as what I know.
Because here's what I would like to see. Twenty-twenty-three budgeted, twenty-twenty-three actual, twenty-twenty-four budget in every single, like, I want to see in the assessor's office, I want to see every line item, what does their budget include, not just a total, but is it, how much is it for salary? How much is it for office supplies? How much is it for travel or whatever else they're asking money for? I want to see what they were budgeted in twenty-twenty-three, what they actually spent in twenty-twenty-three and then what they're asking for in twenty-twenty-four and with an explanation of why there's a difference.
In each line item.
Of each line item.
Yes.
The finance department can do that, if that's the format you like, they can do that.
That would be...
So, this is that Fairgrounds, that document I just sent you for Fairgrounds.
Oh.
That has, I think you just, it's on the...
I like what I see on the Fairgrounds.
Yeah.
I didn't see that.
Actual for twenty-twenty-two, year-to-date.
Oh, I didn't go to the next pages.
Versus the budgeted amount.
Yeah.
Perfect, so Micah has all that for the tentative budget?
Yeah.
Okay.
For the current year?
I have for the tentative budget.
It says twenty-twenty-three actual, twenty-twenty-three budget?
Now, what I'm not certain about is if these statements of revenue and expenditure that Phil sent me, if that matches the tentative budget, your executive budget, David, I'm not really certain if it does, I haven't looked.
Yeah, I believe, I believe it does. He may have made some changes.
Yeah, this is good, this gives, like, like they're asking for twenty-five percent more in camping fees. But is that a revenue?
In other words, they're assuming that the cost, revenue we're getting is going to be twenty-five percent more.
Got it. Anyway, that's, this is what I wanted to see.
Phil will be here for, when we present the tentative budget and answer any detailed questions if you want. I can have him, see if he can come over right now or in between meetings as well and answer questions.
Okay.
Very important, yeah, like this is...
Well, this is, you know, I used to, Dave remembers this, but we used, we got a, we used to get a binder that was that.
Yeah, and it had all this information.
Detailed information.
And that was about, yeah, that's, and all of a sudden it just...
Yeah, it's like I have to print it all out so I can make notes on it and look at it.
What was that called? Is there a different format that you like?
Well, I'm just saying, we used to get a binder, it was about that thick. It had, it was all printed paper and you could go through it and you could, you could make notes, you could circle things you had questions about. It was a lot of work to go through that, but it was, it gave us the detail that we really needed to look at.
Yeah, if you liked them in binders, who can ask the finance department to do that?
After we get through the first two moving phases, I'd like a physical copy too.
Yeah.
I'd like to have it tangible in my hand.
But that's what made it easier because you could, you could take notes, you could circle, you could bookmark and you had questions that you needed to bring up and ask. You didn't have to try to remember the questions in your head.
I had a question too about the tentative budget. Is there a line item for the council? I didn't see it yet and did they, did we turn in a budget for the?
There's one in there, but I, there's one in there.
What page is it on?
It's on page seven. Just the overall.
If I could hear then the council is there?
And we'll be adjusting that.
I have the, my understanding is, is the finance department always sends out like a Google spreadsheet to every department and Phil sent me one, the one for the council. And I think I've shared it with Dave and I believe Barbara as well, but I can share it with all of you. I figured that it wasn't really something that the council needed to look at in great detail until this process started. Whatever we proposed is probably amended anyway, so. But I do have the spreadsheet for the council's budget.
Well, I mean, depending on what the details are, I was at least gratified to see that in most areas we're spending less.
Yeah, there's a lot of them.
And that's, that to me just indicates some really good expense control and concern for what we're spending money on. The big question I had was, as far as capital projects, there's a big zero. I'm wondering, are we, are there things that we need to be looking at that we need to plan for that are going to be capital expenditures coming up, roads and things like that?
There are a...
Sun and roads, I saw that.
There are a number of capital projects, we can go through those in the presentation. Mike, I'll make a note of that.
Because there was nothing budgeted, so that's...
Well, and I'd like to talk about, I'm sure we talk about this later, but our use of funds balance. Almost five million dollars.
Most of that is for one-time projects.
Oh, okay.
So, and those are the capital projects.
Oh.
So, except for fire. Fire is one that is not all capital projects, but other than that, they're all one-time uses.
And so, do we see more details on that someplace to know? Use of cap, of fund balance, capital eight-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand for what?
Page you in.
Yeah.
Page eight? Does it just go, is it?
I'll have, I'll have Phil bring those.
Yeah, that'd be helpful to see.
Yeah, this is actually good if there...
And operations, like, oh, I guess that's year-to-date, but...
Yeah, if there are any other questions or things you want me to have Phil get ready to do.
See the details, most kind of stuff.
Make it a five-minute or so.
Electronically, if somebody would teach me.
We are still recording, just so you...
Yeah.
Well, David said he could print it all out for us so we could make notes on it, I would appreciate that. It's hard to see it do it like on a thing.
Can I clarify a couple of things?
Please.
You sound like you ran here.
Now, have you worked through every single line item in the budget for us?
Every single one. So, two things, just listening to a little bit part of the workshop. The first one is, is the statement of revenues expenditures that come from each department was shared with Micah, the PDF versions of that and the, all the workbooks, so you'll be able to see changes as they happen live. I don't know if they got shared yet.
The three ones I shared with you for Fairgrounds rodeo or public defenders, that's what I was...
The second thing, and just, just one thing I noticed was, and maybe we should have had someone in here with everyone, but, you know, just talking about the revenues, wanting to clarify, the revenues hadn't increased a ton for the rodeo. The three-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand that he presented included a use of property taxes or fund balance of like seventy-seven thousand. So, just making sure that we were looking at the right. Yeah, I think he was reading the total and that includes the balancing of using fund balance and stuff. But yeah, so, the, but that is, that will be new this year with the spreadsheets actually being shared, they're viewing right now. As departments make requests, they will be, will make the changes there and then we will put any change since the tentative budget into an amendment sheet. So, it'll be very similar to what you're used to seeing so that you can see all the changes from tentative to council.
You mentioned as the departments make requests.
Yes, so like, for example, there's already, there's already a couple changes from the tentative because, you know, we finalized it Monday afternoon, finally got through all my emails and realized that the health department has requested an increase there. So, there's going to be a small change to their, their increase that will, you know, present and it'll have to be part of the council one. But we've got that working on an amendment so you guys can see the difference between the two. And then that spreadsheet will be updated so that you can see those changes, so.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
No, when you said that the revenue projection of three-seventy-six included seventy-something thousand dollars from the general fund, does that mean they went over their budget by that much and they had to take in? Like, explain that.
Yeah, so, so, do you have that? Do you want to pull it up? I can explain it. So, the way that it works, each spreadsheet, we want to make sure that they balance. And so, the, the way that the general fund balanced, what this year was through taxes, this way that you can say, okay, Bart in the rodeo had three-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand in expenses and only three-hundred thousand in revenues. That difference is then plugged into the sell, the sales tax, which then goes into a master spreadsheet so we can see what's the total uses. Because we don't plug property or sales tax to each department. So, we get, we see everyone's uses and then we see if we're able to, you know, absorb that with the estimates for property and sales tax. And that's where, you know, where it could come into play if we, if, if, let's say, our end number, right now, the sales tax is ten million. Once you take out, so I think, I think it was roughly, you know, thirty million of taxes, spit into the spreadsheet, this is all estimates. We take out ten million for the sales tax and then we say, we need twenty million in proper taxes or then you're going to have to use fund balance. This year, we've got roughly seventeen million in estimated property taxes, so you've got a three-million-dollar buffer. That would then allow us to say, okay, do we want to fund that with fund balance? Do we want to fund that with cuts? Do we want to fund it with a property tax increase? So, that was the intent of the master spreadsheet and so that's why each one of theirs has that plug figure on it. If we're talking about municipal services, they don't have a property tax, so that was a use of fund balance plug figure to balance their budgets. And then, we were able to analyze whether or not they could be absorbed by the, the sales tax they do have and some of their general taxes. Those are, so that's, that's, that's how that kind of was, was going to work this year. And so, you'll see with the tentative, we'll talk about it later. You know, we talked about a couple of different things, the coming from fund balance and stuff, and then we're able to balance the rest of it with just current operations. So, some funds will be users, some funds will have, have excess. You know, if we look at the municipal expenses and then the municipal miscellaneous contributions, that's right there, it's funding, you know, a lot of the departments that can't fund themselves types of thing, so.
So, is that difference in, because you project revenues that you're not exactly sure when you're doing the budget last year? Like, we think this is the revenue we'll get and here's our budget and then the revenues were different, so we have to make up the difference? Or is it the people are not sticking to their budget and overspending or underspending? Like, tell me, explain that part to me.
So, so usually, you know, one of, one of the issues I would say with not having enough revenues is that you, the trend usually is to estimate a little bit higher on the expense side because you don't want to go over budget and then be more conservative on the revenue side. So, for example, we've got a budget amendment for the interest I brought up in one of the meetings, I've only brought it up to two-point-five million. I think we're going to get two-point-nine, but we're still on the conservative side of it. So, that's one reasons why sometimes it's harder to balance budget. Actuals usually come in at a better, you know, let's say our budget...
at a better, you know, let's say our budget estimated using 3 million of fund balance or, or usually fund balance. We usually come in at only, you know, half-ish that. I, I can't say that with certainty. But it's usually, the margin is usually better, unless something just happens to our revenues, that we're, they're really, really bad. So, looks like you guys are getting ready for that.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Phil. I just, I've never done a budget like this before, so.
Yeah. And there's, there's just so many departments that it, there's a lot of moving parts with them. So.
So my question was, the transition, when you're gone and we're still heavy into this budget.
Yes.
Are you available for calls for Zoom, for, what's the, what's the process or the outlook here?
So I've, I've discussed, I, I've got some projects with Amy in HR that will kind of come up in the budget amendment, and then, of course, the finance division. I have offered to consult, so I've got some, just a small budget amendment in there for that, and I will then be available to, to help the transition. Right now, it's really hard because, you know, the cross-training was not between everyone in the office, it was between me and Cameron. And with both of us being gone, that transition needs to start happening with either David Benson, Brittany is kind of the next in line, or long enough that the new person that comes on. And so I have offered to, to help consult and stuff. I kind of foresee that to be very minimal on the management side, you know, reviewing some things and more of a checking, you know, deadlines. I know that there's some deadlines coming up at the end of October, that I'm the only one that's, well, Cameron, but I'm the only one that knows how to do it. And so I'll schedule a time to, to meet with Brittany and train her how to do it.
What kind of a deadline is that?
So the, the two that are coming up, the, the state requires quarterly non-property tax submissions for the sales tax. So we submit those. That's part of, and, and, which will be great, because it'll also be able to teach Brittany how to do the sales forecast, because that's part of that. So we submit that one, usually around the 25th of October. Then the transparency website is due every quarter. So I'll train her how to do that type, types of things. So that's some of the, the transitioning that we'll, we'll, we'll do. So, yeah.
Thanks, Phil.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you.
Want to eat some salsa?
Yeah, 30 minutes of salsa.